We shall talk to order.
Thank you.
Pledge of the agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living truth and justice for all.
All right. Roll call.
President Everon.
Here.
Vice President Wazore.
Here.
Treasurer Demmerman.
Present.
Secretary Zeller.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Lady.
Here.
And Trustee Zer.
Here.
All accounts.
All right, great. Okay. Conservation ethic, goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis for our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number two, acquire and maintain other wildland scenic areas and open spaces for conservation purposes and for educational and recreational use.
Thanks, Mike.
That's.
Creating a conservation stewardship pledge, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in Henry County depends on healthy, sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, recreate. Number three, we will remain steadfast in our commitment to protect the state's natural areas.
Thanks, Rob.
And then, yes, land acknowledgement statement. Many indigenous groups and tribal nations, including the Ho-Chang, Kekapu, Lakota, Dakota, Masutin, Miami, Lurkia, Atawatani, Saq, and Maswak. Henry County is part of the traditional home. We invite you to enjoy us, to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestors stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn and honor the history of those who came before us, and strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to them.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll adopt the agenda.
Well, everyone's had a chance to take a look at it over an old book, no changes or pullouts from our, from our, from the home, so. I have a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to accept. Second. Second calls in favor.
Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Zer.
Yes.
Treasurer Demmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yes.
And President Everon.
Yes. Well. Then.
So we'll go to special recognition, but issues, so operations manager over there.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I stood up here last one with you introducing members that I bragged about were homegrown. And really proud to have them spend their career with the district. Have another gentleman here in the sitting next to me, Mr. Gil Hernandez, also a homegrown talent, a little bit shorter timeframe, but we're going to call him homegrown and from within. He's a new team member with us, the operations department of Ranger One, Jim B. So that's our entry level ranger position, we work with Ranger Two, Chad C. We're down there. Dave served, or Gil, sorry, served for five years in the United States Marine Corps. That's where he began his career, so to speak. He came to the district first as a seasonal with our operations department in 2024, down in Region Four, working with Eric Kornstrom, Travis Andos. After he finished his season with us, he got hired on through the LPNR division as a district stewardship and outreach seasonal. Spent a few months doing that and then was converted to a part-time position as a steward ecologist in the spring, this past spring of 2025. And then in June, he was hired as a seasonal restoration technician with the land conservancy of McHenry County and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, working up in the Hackford area. So part-time with us and part-time working with them up there. So now, but we're happy to have him back with us in a full-time capacity and probably to have him in the operations department. So welcome, Bill Hernandez.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your service and congratulations on the new.
Right, audit intentation.
Yes.
Oh, yours, Andy.
So we have Jim Savio, Seekage, the audit, he's a partner with our audit firm, Seekage. Seekage has a lot of expertise in government accounting, they're one of the top thirty in the nation. Will do over two hundred governmental clients, I know from past years they've done the county as well. They've been instrumental in helping us make sure we have a comprehensive hack for that's always supplied, has to, just changing all the time and allows us to get the certificate of access to financial reporting here. So he's here to go over both the financial audit report and a comprehensive financial report as well as the board communications, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, everyone, for your time here tonight. Do appreciate it. Want to thank, too, Elizabeth, Andy, Jean, and the entire staff for all of their help throughout the audit. We were able to, you know, meet all of our key deadlines again this year. Audit went smoothly, as it usually does, and we were able to get our reports out on time, so I want to thank them for that. What I'll do is I'll go through, like I typically do, the annual comprehensive financial report first. I'll start with the table of contents, just to give you a high, high-level overview of what's in the report. It's a pretty long report. And then I'll point out a few highlights, and then I'll go through the board communication report, too, as Andy said. So I'll start, like I said, with the annual comprehensive financial report, or the ACF, I might call it. And again, like I said, I'll start and just go over the table of contents. So if you want to look at the table of contents, there's three main sections. There's the introductory, financial, and then statistical sections. In the financial section, that's the main part of the report. We have the independent auditor's report, which I'll talk about in a minute. Then the management discussion and analysis that Andy prepares, and I'll talk about that real briefly as well. And then we get into the basic financial statements. So the basic financial statements are what we actually give an opinion on. When we go over the independent auditor's report, I'll kind of explain what we do with the rest of the information in the report. So in the basic financial statements, you have the government-wide financial statements, the statement of net position and statement of activities. These are your consolidated financial statements, so it's got all of the funds of the, of the district, as shown as governmental activities. You don't have any business-type activities. These have a long-term focus, so they have capital assets, they have long-term debt. It's similar to corporate financial statements. So if you're comparing apples to apples with a corporate financials, these are the financial statements that you would compare them with.
Jim?
Yeah.
Are you just still giving just a general overview going off of the introductory section, the index?
Yeah, I'm just going over the first page of the table of contents.
So you're just giving a high level going through the table of contents. All right, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
Yep, no problem. So those are the government-wide financial statements on pages five and six. The fund financial statements follow right after that. They are different. They have a different focus. They have a short-term focus. So there's no capital assets, no long-term debt. It's similar to how you budget and how you review your monthly reports. They're presented by major fund, so each major fund has their own column, and then the non-major funds, of which you only have two, are combined and they're shown as one, one column in the fund financial statements. So like I said, they're short-term, and there's a reconciliation on pages nine and eleven that kind of show you how you get from that short-term focus to the long-term focus. So on the notes to the financial statements start on pages twelve through forty, so a lot of great additional information that supports the basic financial statements and should be read in conjunction with it. After that, then, on the second page of the table of contents, starts the required supplementary information, or RSI. So there's a budget versus actual report for your general fund, which is required to be shown there in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. After that, then are some schedules on your participation in Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, or IMRF, and then your other post-employment benefit, which is your retiree health insurance. After that, then are the combining individual fund statements and schedules. So these have a lot more detailed schedules for the major and non-major funds, including a lot of budget versus actual reports. And then the last two sections are the stat section. That's on the last page of the table of contents. You'll see it's broken out by various activities, financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and then operating information. So this has a lot of ten-year trend information, kind of puts the financial statements in the proper perspective, and has some interesting information there. And then the other information are some SEC disclosures that we, as they're labeled, are unaudited. So that's kind of what's in the report, you know, it's, you know, about a hundred pages if you include the MDNA in the introductory section, so a lot, a lot of information to go over there. I'll start my review with the independent auditor's report. That's on page one. That's the first part of the financial section. So on page one, you'll see the opinion section is the very first section of the report. And in that second paragraph, we give what we call an unmodified opinion, so that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the district. And it basically says that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then that third paragraph, right after that, there's some comparative information you might have seen in the government-wide financial statements. So what that's basically saying is we audited that information in the prior year and it's consistent with the prior year report. And then the very last paragraph on page one, the change in accounting principle, we did adopt GASB statement 101 related to compensated absences. What that did was basically change how you recognize a liability for sick time and other compensated balances. Previously, we basically only recorded what was paid out in cash when the employee separated from the district. Now we have to also accrue an additional amount for an amount that's more likely than not to be used as time off. So it increased the liability a little bit. You'll notice that in footnote thirteen, but not by a tremendous amount. And this is only recorded in those government-wide financial statements, so not in the general fund or anything else. So like I said, there's additional information on that in footnote thirteen. And then if you want to skip down to the third page of the independent auditor's report, you'll notice this basically kind of tells you what we do with the rest of the information. So we give an opinion on the basic financial statements for required supplementary information, which is the MDNA, and then those budget versus actual for the general fund, and then the information for IMRF and your retiree health. We do read that information, make sure it's consistent with the basic financial statements, but just limited procedures, not enough to give an opinion on it. The supplementary information, that's the combining individual fund statements and schedules, that we give what we call an in relation to opinion. So in relation to the basic financial statements, they are not materially misstated, so we gave an unmodified opinion on that as well. And then the other information, that last paragraph on page three, first paragraph on page four, that's introductory and stat section, and then that SEC information. We don't audit this information, so we don't give an opinion on it. We do read it, make sure it's not materially inconsistent with the basic financial statements, or not otherwise materially misstated. So it wasn't materially misstated, but if it was, we'd ask you to correct it. So that's the independent auditor's report. Right after that is Andy's favorite exercise each year. That's preparing the management discussion and analysis. So great overview of the district's financial position and changes in financial position. Point out any significant trends or changes that have occurred during the year, and I'll talk about that in a minute, one that occurred this year. Also has some three-year comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report, so I always encourage you, if you want to read one thing in the report, read the MDNA, because it's a, it's a good overview of the district's finances. I'm just going to point out a couple things in the annual comprehensive financial report. Be happy to answer questions at any point, though. I'm going to start on page seven and eight, so this is the governmental funds balance sheet. So these are those short-term focused financial statements. And I'm going to go to page eight, and the general fund is your very first column there. You'll see all the way down at the bottom on page eight, under the fund balance section.
Kind of finance.
Yeah.
Which section?
It looks like that. You know, finance and finance.
So what actually you're saying, same section, like you've got to get past the MDNA at the bottom?
Okay.
So finance section.
So the financial section.
You're going to get past, they're numbered, MDNA, you're going to get.
Yeah.
There we go.
Three numbers.
Very good. Thank you.
So he's jumping the page. Slapping people on fighting with them once those points that end even stops, off the bottom. They go.
Yes, we're almost there. Keep on. When these, when the numbers start at everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. So now, next page. Literally next page. There, yeah.
They pick it while you're going along. Up there.
Yeah. I thought we were going to do. Okay. Or that they have.
Thank you. Yep. Great, so, so like I said, I'm on page seven and eight, the balance sheet for governmental funds. And the general fund is your very first column, you'll notice there. So if you scroll down to page eight in the fund balance section, so this is like your retained earnings if this was a for-profit corporation. For the general fund, you'll see assigned for subsequent year's budget of $683,000. That's because the budgeted expenditures were more than revenues in the next fiscal year's budget. So we show that as assigned, and then the unassigned amount is that $4 you noticed there. So that's a decrease from last year's 2.4 million, I believe, and that's basically due to a transfer to the debt service fund, because the debt service property tax levy was abated. You'll notice that in that second column, which is your debt service fund, the committed debt service, 3.6 million, that, that was a transfer from the general fund into the debt service fund, and we'll see that in a minute. But Andy has an explanation of this in the MDNA, so it explains what's going on there and why the unassigned amount decreased. That's temporary. Once you get the property tax receipts, it'll, it's obviously already back up in fiscal year twenty-six.
I just kind of had one thing. So these fund statements you're looking at mirror what we show you on a monthly basis. The one difference is we give you a separate statement for each fund, right? You're just putting them all together and down. If you go back and look at what we presented March three first, it's pretty close to this, there are a few adjusting entries, and we don't have anything wrapped up fiscal year between that and the June audit, but generally they'll mirror pretty closely. And then the 3.6 million, like Jim said, because we did that transfer, the receipts that come in from the twenty-four levy this year, fiscal twenty-six, they get to stay in the, in the general fund's operation, they're already transferred 3.6. So at the end of this year, the general fund's fund balance will be restored. All right, back to you, Jim.
All right, thanks, Andy. So if you want to scroll down to page ten, this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this is like your income statement for the governmental funds. You'll see about three-quarters of the way down, the general fund, again, that's the first column in the financial statements. The excess deficiency of revenues was a deficiency of about 733,000. Last year was about a small increase of about 51,000. And then you'll see those transfers in and out, right below that, in the other financing sources and uses. So you'll see those transfers out of the general fund, the 3.6 going to debt service, and then the remaining amounts going to capital asset management plan and the dedicated projects for capital, capital projects. And then you'll see the net change in fund balance. That's your income statement, basically. You'll see because of the transfers, general fund was a net decrease of about 5.9 million. And the last thing I'll talk about, I usually go through this every year, and this is in the required supplementary information, which is on, hopefully I got the pages here, page forty-two to forty-four. So that's towards the back of the report. And page forty-two is the schedule of employer contributions for IMRF. So this shows you a ten-year information on what the actuary says you should contribute. You're, you contribute the exact amount each year, so there's no excess deficiency. But you'll notice from 2016 to 2025, the contributions as a percentage of covered payroll, that last line, it's gone, steadily gone down from about 12% of covered payroll to about a little under 9%. So that's trending lower for the past ten years. And then on pages forty-three and forty-four, basically show the funded status of IMRF for the last ten years. So on page forty-three, the total pension liability, this is calculated by the actuary at IMRF. That's your liability per the actuarial calculations. The planned fiduciary net position, that's what you've paid into IMRF and what's in trust to pay for the liabilities, and then the difference between the two is a net pension asset or liability. So it's been a liability every year except for one year, 2021. So it decreased slightly this year from 2023 to 2024, and the funded ratio, which is the very first line on page forty-four, that's increased slightly to just about 92%. And that's also improved over the last ten years. Ten years, you'll see in 2015, it was about 77% funded. So that's all I had to go over on the annual comprehensive financial report. I'll talk about the board communication as well, so that's the smaller report, the auditor's communication to the board of trustees. And I'll start to, on the table of contents with that as well. And you'll see in the table of contents, there's a cover letter on page one, and then there's some required communication that we have to have with the board each year. That's on pages two through four. So pretty routine this year. Like I said, we didn't have any, any delays in the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We do communicate that we implemented GASB 101, like I mentioned previously. But like I said, pre-routine communication there, but you can read through that. On page five, then, we have to list out any audit adjustments we found, so these were adjustments we found as part of the audit process.
Jim, hold on one second. So we should have a smaller board communication. And he's on page, I think he said.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on the table of contents right now.
Oh, you're still on the table of contents.
Yeah. So yeah, if you turn to the table of contents, like I said, on pages two through four, required communication we have to have with the board each year. And then on page five, we just had one audit adjustment listed on page five. Like I said, that's, this is an adjustment we found during our audit procedures. We have to communicate that to the board. After that, we didn't have any what we call past adjusting journal entries. These would be entries that were deemed to be immaterial, but above a certain materiality level, we have to communicate that to the board. So we didn't have any past adjustments at all, so everything that needed to be adjusted was adjusted. And then finally, the management letter starts on page six, and if you go to page seven, what that letter says is basically in writing that you had no material weaknesses. We also didn't note any significant deficiencies or any deficiencies at all. So great job by, by Andy and Jean and the, the entire staff.
That's terrific. I mean, that's, that often you get a complete audit like that and find no find of, of long, you know, majors and other discrepancies, so thank you.
So when you, I got a question, though. What's your materiality threshold for your AGEs to report to the board?
Oh, I don't know off the top, off the top of my head. It's, it depends on the opinion unit. And I don't want to get like too into the weeds about it, but we have different opinion unit levels, so like governmental activities is much higher, because you've got a lot of assets, a lot of land, a lot of capital assets. But then we have other materiality thresholds for like major funds. So all the major funds that we listed out have a separate materiality. So we calculate it based on tolerable misstatement or performance materiality, we call it, and it's like, it's basically like 5% of that amount.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it fluctuates based on, you know, where we think the potential misstatement is. So if it's a $20 adjustment, we're not going to communicate that to you.
Right, yeah, I understand. Curiosity, because I don't, I don't know what you guys have deemed.
They're only, during audit, from my recollection, only two other read through, so there's the one you did before.
Yeah.
There are two other small ones that we really, our staff, as we were kind of finishing up preparing, found them and communicated to the auditors. Outside of that, there was no other AG sitting somewhere that we made based on Seekage's recommendation, you know, seeing.
Yeah.
There's happened years, I think there's been a couple like he's talking about where they didn't come out at all.
Yes.
And one or two, it's not like.
Right, yeah, they're going to be out.
Maybe, could you help me out when we get on page forty-four?
Back on the big.
Yeah, big, and it says planned fiduciary net position is percentage of total pension liability. In 2015, it's 77.01. In 2024, it's 91.96. Honestly, I just don't know what that means and how to interpret those numbers.
Well, the funding of the pension is kind of the key to everything, right? And so if you look at the state of Illinois, for example, they're funded at like 40%, one of the first funded pensions in the, in the nation. Anything 70% or above, and it's pretty, have a decent C, C-plus rating. The district's only been in IMRF, I think, late nineties, early two thousand, something like that. They were just, maybe it was ninety-eight, ninety-nine. So if you first get into it, you don't have a lot of assets and they're accumulated to start covering your liability, right? So 2015, we sure have been in IMRF for at least ten years, and just as it's designed, over time, your assets are growing, you're having to make an annual contribution based on your payroll and based on your funding stance. So if we were still in twenty-three at 77%, we probably have a 15% contribution versus the 7% that we have right now.
But is this the same IMRF that teachers are in and other, other.
Teachers have, well.
It's a difference.
There may be some school districts IMRF, and others administration. Teachers generally have their own teacher state pension that's separate.
But for Illinois, the, you know, teachers, firemen, police are way underfunded, as you pointed out, you know, one of the worst in the nation. Don't these funds get commingled with other people at night? So this is a separate account within IM, IMR?
Yeah, it's not part of this, it's not part of the state.
With other state pensions, absolutely not. And yes, our account within IMRF stands alone, the district's funding. When people retire, they actually pull those assets out of our pool and they're set aside.
Okay.
They, they purchase on annuity when, when someone retires.
Okay.
So.
So then back in that same page where it says employers' net pension liability parentheses asset as position of covered payroll. So the fact that you look in 2024 and you see the 39%, that means our, the liability is going down, if I interpret it positive. But how do I interpret the 85.42% 2015? You can tell.
Just not in the competition.
It's just basically showing the ratio of the liability to your covered payroll, so the lower the number, the better. It just, it gives you, just, and you can compare yourself then to other governments as to how well you're doing. But yeah, the lower the number, the better. It just kind of gives you what, what your pension burden is, basically.
Yes, I have an HR background, Jim. So when I see a spread from 85.4% to 39% to me, I'm just thinking, boy, that's quite a big spread. And if the lower is better, eighty-five relatively speaking, see, was there any type of issue, or how do I interpret the 2015 numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was like Andy said, it's like when, you had only been in the plan, I don't know how many years you said, Andy, ten years or whatever, but yeah, it's, it's, the liability was higher when you first got in. But over your, IMRF's funding ratio, or how they determine your contribution, they want to be 100% funded in nineteen years as of the last valuation, which was 123124. So you're contributing an amount where hypothetically, you know, if all the actuaries assumptions turn out to be 100% correct, you would be 100% funded like in nineteen years. So that's their, that's their goal.
And I think you know, something that would contribute to this is we had some significant retirement itself relying here or two. So you have, you know, long-term employees who have left. You're hiring new people, you have years and years to approve for their benefits. I think that would.
Yeah, thanks, Andy, too. If we're above seventy percent, it's good to be at, you know, ninety-one percent. Seems like a truck salary.
Any other questions?
I'll just point out real quick, too.
One more question.
Sure.
Yeah, I just curious, I think more for the board of, you know, going into an audit like this, I mean, you do have a lot of background with the district. Is there any areas like of higher risk that you spend more time on, you know, when you, when you're going through the beginning of the audit process for a district like this? I mean, even, even outside of the, your scope where, you know, you've done several years on audit?
Yeah, so we, we do a, a risk assessment during our planning stages. So that's where, you know, we do that with every audit we do, so.
All right, but is there, is there an area that you tend to deem higher risk?
Well.
When it comes in regards to say a district similar to this, like is it, are you going to look at, you know, funding balances or something like that? Or just, I mean, any areas that may be higher that the board could, you know, maybe direct their attention to when they're going through the report? Outside of, MDNA is obviously the, the first place that, you know, someone that doesn't really have an interest in financials would go to, to read and get an overview of the report. But outside of that, just any area of higher risk that you guys tend to look at?
So yeah, so we do a risk assessment at the beginning of the audit. And then we, we, we communicate that to the board, actually, now. That was required a few years ago. So there's two areas that are always deemed to be high risk. Doesn't matter if it, if we're auditing McHenry County Conservation District or, you know, Apple or Microsoft. So that's management override of controls and then revenue recognition. Revenue recognition for governments is really not as big of a risk because you don't have stockholders. You're not trying to inflate your, your earnings or your, you know, your financial position. So, but even for governments, we, we include that. So we communicate that. And then if we find anything else, we'll communicate that as well. So we haven't had anything additional besides that. So for management override of control, I mean, we, we look at journal entries because that's an easy way to, to cover up a fraud. So we do look at journal entries, make sure they're being approved, reviewed by somebody else, that they seem to make sense. So we do, we do that, you know, we do our.
As well as the adjusting ones, right?
Pardon?
As well as the AGEs too, right?
Yeah, we look at, we, we're focused on general journal entries because those are the ones that are like manual. So those are where you have someone, you know, recording something to cover up, you know, a fraud. So, yeah, we do, we do look at that. We, you know, we do our fraud inquiries, we have assigned more seasoned people to areas that we deem to be more high risk. We do, like I said, we, we consider revenues to be high risk, but because your property taxes are like ninety percent of what you bring in and we confirm that directly with the county, it's not really as big of a risk. So, you know, those are the main risks. We didn't find any additional ones, like I said. And then it's basically, you know, with an organization like the district, you have enough, you know, you have enough personnel where segregation of duties isn't really like a big problem. But you're still a little bit smaller of an organization. So if someone was out, you know, or you, you, you know, for some reason, there wasn't a person who could review certain things that they normally do, I mean, that, that's potentially going to be a risk. But like I said, you do have, you know, you have enough personnel and finance to, to, to have a good segregation of duties.
Thank you.
And then the other report we issued, like I said, was in relation to opinion on the consolidated year-end financial report. So that's a list of grants that you're required to submit to the Illinois Grant Accountability and Transparency Unit or GADU. So we did issue an unmodified opinion on that schedule. So in relation to the basic financial statements, it's not materially misstated. So those are the three reports that we issued, but be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Jim, I think we're good. Thank you, Andy. Thanks, Jim.
All right, great. Yep. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
We recognize a lot of work goes into getting everything ready for it. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Good for the accounting team, Jean, personally, because all our audits are for leadership.
All right.
Okay, trustees report. Understood a couple of things. One, Elizabeth is not here. She's southwest or some finished the Pacific Trail. She sent me a picture of she greeting him and meeting him and boy, he looks like he's been walking for six months. Man, what an ordeal, but what an, what an accomplishment. But, you know, their smiles are just, you know, beaming. So it'd be really cool. Wish her, wish her well and him well. Beer trail, anybody get to go to that? I would say.
New course records.
Now that's part of the official record. And then there's the McHenry County Council of Governments has their meeting Wednesdays. Everybody want to go to that? I know Kristi's looking.
I already RSVP for you.
Okay. All right.
So no one else? No, it's time.
That's an Harvard, right?
Yeah, yeah. At the distillery.
Yes.
Okay, great, great, perfect. Good luck, representation. So, so thank you. Any other trustees?
Yes, the, we come out at Scott Forge with a very nice newsletter. And McHenry County Conservation District got a whole page. And it was about the interns showing up and Scott Forge giving back. So it's, and I forgot it, but I'll bring it next time. But it was really, really cool to see all these interns wanting to give back to conservation in the community. And they just, and I don't even know who, who is running the interns, but fabulous job. They, that was one of their favorite days at the internship.
Maybe a suggestion might be to send it to Kristi and she can distribute it.
Oh, yeah.
I can definitely send that out to everyone.
Yeah, that'd be great. So nicely done. Thank you. Anyone else? Ladies on?
We, last week, we voted seventeen unanimously for a new administrator. So very exciting. Scott Hartman is the name. And so he's got big shoes to fill, twenty years. Peter Austin has been our administrator. So he's been underneath Peter Austin for about eleven years. And I think he's going to be wonderful. I think he's going to work great with the district. And he's, he's a big spongy moth guy. I don't know much about it, but he's really adamant about it and he loves conservation. And I think you guys will all really enjoy it, so.
Also a big fisherman. Big guy, fisherman.
Yeah.
His daughter.
So he's just a wonderful guy and everyone's excited. I bet the county loves him.
He's a great guy. He never ran the ethics committee for five years, so I got to know him really well. Yeah, he's a tough guy. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Little trustees.
All right. Other comments? I'm not seeing any raise hands online. Okay. All right. A consent agenda, so let's, uh, let's see. Is this the one where you read all these things? So let's stop here and pause. We have a rapid attention.
I make a motion to, I say read, read the board business consent agenda.
You make a motion to approve and then you read.
Oh, motion to approve.
And then you read the.
Oh, and then I read. Okay, sorry. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Okay, thirteen point O, board business consent agenda. Thirteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Thirteen point one A, August second, two thousand twenty-five, special call meeting, board joint meeting, development workshop. Thirteen point one B, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole. Thirteen point one C, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Thirteen point two A, acceptance of treasures report for August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Thirteen point three, resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-seven, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report as prepared by Sketch LLP of Naperville, Illinois for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which began on April one, twenty twenty-four and ended March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Thirteen point four, resolution number twenty-five dash seven eight, authorizing the acceptance, execution and filing of related certificates of the public funds annual statement for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Thirteen point five, resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-nine, authorizing the execution of a contract with Waste Management of Illinois, Lombard, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder to provide refuse, recycling and project dumpster rental services for a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand five hundred. McHenry County bid number twenty-five dash eight three five six. Thirteen point six, resolution number twenty-four dash eighty, awarding a contract to Carmichael Construction Inc. of Moringa, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the needed exterior stair repairs on the Furry View Education Center at Silver Creek Conservation Area, Crystal Lake, Illinois, for a total cost not to exceed the base bid plus alternative number one of one hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars. Thirteen point seven, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the Hollows Conservation Area residents and Goose Lake Conservation Area Holbarn demolition projects in Cary and Bearden, Illinois, respectively. Thirteen point eight, resolution number twenty-five dash eighty-one, ratifying the district's participation in McHenry County Conservation Foundation's grant application to the DOW promised grant for purchasing native seed.
Second to the motion.
I have one item to point out. I don't know if it matters or not, but thirteen point one, in session lab, I'm seeing for minutes, three dates in August. But it looks like what Nora had to read includes dates from July. So she had read to July dates.
Okay, so that would be corrected to thirteen point one B, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole last month. Thirteen point one C, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting for last month. That's just a scripter's error on their, on your annotated agenda, but it's published on the regular agenda. Correct what it should be. Yeah, if you look at the published agenda, and I apologize, fifty-dollar, that was a scripter's error. But it was published correctly.
Oh, you're right. I see.
On the regular agenda, on the website and on session labs.
And you got it right in the resolution that I signed every.
Well, you'll sign the actual minute. If you, I mean, I just, I just made note verbally of the corrected dates. Got it.
Okay, so second, or second? The red body.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller. Yes. Trustee Brady. Yes. Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Vice President Wazouric.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes.
And thank you for.
If you get a chance to look at the, the actual bids, that stairway, the bids were amazing in terms of the difference. One was literally twice as much, the highest was twice as much as the lowest. So yeah, it's quite a spread.
Oh, you did.
Yeah. All right, treasures report.
Fourteen point one A, Treasurers Internal Audit. I told two items this month. It was pretty standard issue expenses. It was almost hard to even find anything. First one was invoice C five one seven nine, Carmichael Construction. An amount of twenty thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars. The second one, Andy, I apologize, I, I just threw it in there, but I didn't even, I didn't even tell you why. And but the second item was invoice five nine six seven to wayfinding signage. There's an amount of eleven thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars. And then there was two other amounts, one and then an adjustment for the same amount. That I was just asking for the reason for the adjustment. So the adjustment was nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. And then it was credited at nine, works out in the fifty-sixty. So just the same amount, just curious. I mean, that's it. I made a motion to approve those payable as indicated on submission of those pending report for the month of month ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Just need a second.
Second. Where we're at?
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady. Yes. Secretary Zeller. Yes. Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Vice President, President Wazouric.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. Item fourteen point two, twenty twenty-five property tax extension and truth in taxation ordinance. Make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty-five ten sixty-three, an ordinance establishing the levy and assessment of property taxes from the Henry County Conservation District of Henry County, Illinois, and calendar year twenty twenty-five to be collected in calendar year twenty twenty-six. Second.
Second.
Better by Heather.
Secretary Zeller. Yes. Vice President Wazouric.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Trustee Brady. Yes. Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. Just want to make a comment that I hope everyone else is good with that extension. I think it looked amazing. It was a lot of work done. So it's just really forward, forward thinking on a statute of apps. It's really exciting to see those numbers on paper in our board. Thanks to the step. Item fourteen three, approval of professional services agreement forward to twenty forty comprehensive conservation plan that they visioned to twenty seventy-one. Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five eighty-two, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a professional services agreement with Upland Design Limited of Chicago, Illinois for consulting services on the forward to twenty forty. The division to twenty seventy-one comprehensive conservation plan for a cost not to exceed two hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty dollars. RFQ number zero five two five dot zero four dot zero one.
Second.
I'll sign.
All right, this is a big one.
Trustee Brady. Yes. Trustee Lady. Yes. Vice President Wazouric.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller. Yes. President Everard.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Executive Director's report was not here, but you have something to.
I do, I get the seat filler like at the Oscars today. But no, I do have a report on behalf of the executive team. So as you mentioned, Lloyd, Elizabeth did get to see Christopher in Cascade National Park in Washington. Do we have photos of that? Are they, maybe he's going to pop them up just so you can see. So there he was being reunited with his pup, who Elizabeth has been watching while he's been on the trail. And then there are the two of them together, of course. And so one of the fun facts I learned is that he went through seven pairs of shoes. So that is the coolest part of the story, seven pairs of shoes.
How many miles was that total?
Gay, you might.
Hundred and sixty.
Oh, wow. Yeah, a lot. Yeah, he left on Earth Day. So it's, yeah.
It's incredible.
Yeah. Big accomplishment right there.
A big hand for him.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're just happy that Elizabeth was able to go and get to meet him at the end of that trail. So, um, so last week, Elizabeth and I went to Orlando for the NRPA conference. I know those of you who've been to conferences with Elizabeth, she's a little bit of celebrity when you go to the conferences. And she knows everybody. So it was actually, it was a really great experience for me. Elizabeth was sworn in as president of the Academy of Parks and Recreation Administration, which is a huge deal, just being in that. Um, just being in that academy, it's a very select group of people throughout the country, um, who they pick to be in the academy itself. And then, of course, she, a few years ago, won the Pugsley Award, which is their like prestigious award. But she's now president, um, and so she'll serve, she's been serving as pre-president, um, she'll serve as current president and then she'll serve as post-president, um, they do like a three-year term. So um, we got to see her sworn in there. Uh, the Great After Beer Trail, as you mentioned, um, Lloyd, uh, was a huge success, so it was the biggest one that we've ever had. Um, we had one thousand two hundred and twenty-four tickets sold. Um, uh, that was a few more than last year. Uh, and we had twenty-four brewers with seventy-four different um beers or um, you know, beverages to taste with five food vendors this year. So um, we increased food vendors, increased breweries. Uh, the foundation held its first fifty-fifty raffle, which was a huge success. Um, and we'll have a full report with all of the, the numbers, these are just the preliminary numbers, we'll have a full report for you guys in the October board packet, so.
Weather hold off in time or did it rain at the end or?
About half an hour uh before it was about to end, so we were just doing last call and it started raining. So it was actually really great timing, people started leaving. Yeah, yeah, that we blew out a little bit faster, um, but we were doing last call anyway, so it ended up being really good timing, actually. And the weather throughout the day was beautiful, so we could have asked for a better day, otherwise.
Great, thank you.
And then um, for uh update from Andy's division, so we're finishing up round one interviews um for the accounting assistant position, um, uh, which you all just proved to go full-time, um, so they're working on um, uh, finishing up those first rounds. On Saturday, Gabe will be leading a hike, hike with Mike at North Branch, um, and that starts at ten AM. If anybody wants to go out there, um, I'm sure Gabe will be giving a rousing um talk on the trail as you hike. Uh, but that's, you know, a great opportunity to get outside.
Uh, North Branch again?
North Branch is north of Blacial Park, so if you follow the Never Sink North, um, I don't, do you want to get more specifics?
Houston Road.
So, yeah. Um, so it's also, we have the bike path that goes through it, the uh, Hebron, Hebron Trail? Hebron Trail, yeah, Bridge Trail and then the Hebron Trail also. Um, and then uh, just a reminder that there is a joint foundation and district board meeting on Monday, November third and Monday, November tenth at five P M here. So just a reminder, we'll remind you guys a couple more times, but um, just a reminder of that. Um, and then just an update um on the camp that we talked about, um, not last week, the week before. Um, John's team has placed a fifty-dollar line item um for historical buildings. Um, so per your, yeah, yeah, fifty, fifty thousand, yeah, I said that.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty, fifty dollars, fifty thousand, uh. Apologies, fifty thousand, um, and so uh, per your requests, um, it's been done, so.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's it for the director's board.
All right, well, thank you very much. I, I won't be able to attend the uh Saturday walkout, the fishing, salmon fishing in the Pier Marquette River, yeah.
Nice.
Two weekends out of the year, they allow fly fishing only, catch and release, but the salmon are coming in, we're actually thirty-five miles inland. And you stand in the river and the fish are literally bumping in your lap. It's so, it's incredible, really, I've done it twice before. And uh, it's from Baldwin, Michigan, you've been there, right? Baldwin, Michigan, on the Pier Marquette River. So I'll give you a full report. All right, thank you, public comments, so we have any for the online?
Nobody answered, hand raised, all right.
Right? Or German, does anyone have anything to add? All right, I'll entertain motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Like? The grab of?
Trustee Lady, yes. Trustee Derek.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady, yes. Vice President Wazorek.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller, yes. President Everard.
Yeah. Right.
Fifty-four.